Yeah, funny. All right. Yes, I do. I would like to. Yep. So we are coming to order tonight on January twenty-third, Planning Commission meeting, and we're going to start with roll call. Jasmine?
Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Vice Chair Magai. And Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
We have quorum.
Okay, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. We always start Planning Commission with public comments. So if anybody has anything to say tonight that is not on the agenda, please come forward. State your name. Mad rush to the podium. Okay, seeing none? That is, that's correct, John. Yep, great. So seeing no public communication that is un-agendized, we will close public communication. Is there any written communication? All right. First item tonight is the consent calendar. There are two sets of meeting minutes to be approved. Is, do I hear motion to approve these minutes?
I present a motion to approve both minutes, those two minutes.
I will second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
I.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Magai.
I.
And Chair Heschler.
Yes.
Motion passes for all.
All right. Next topic is public hearings, and there is new business tonight. Tonight, we have a, an affordable housing strategic plan study session, and is there a staff report?
Yeah, I'll introduce and then I'll hand it over to our wonderful consulting team. Are we ready?
Please, please.
If a couple of the members of the commission might recall, because this goes back to the several study sessions that we had on the housing element, that one of the, one of the programs of the adopted housing element that HCD certified was that the city developed and implement a, an affordable housing strategic plan. And actually, Paul, this goes back two housing plan cycles ago, is that right? Or is it just the most recent one? Even the previous one. So this goes back two housing cycles. In the midst of developing the housing cycle, the housing plan that we have today, we also were concurrently working on developing the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. And on staff's behalf, Agnes is not here, but she's one of our management analysts. Agnes has taken the lead with me on this coming to fruition. The, the draft plan came to the Planning Commission in 2023, I think in March. There were several elements of the draft plan as part of a few study sessions that were held. And in March of 2023, the, or maybe twenty, maybe it was 2024. I'm sorry, it wasn't that long ago. It was last year. And in the following May, City Council adopted the draft plan with the Planning Commission's recommendations. And so there were several components of that strategic plan, primarily daylighting sort of existing conditions of the housing market and the affordability concerns or considerations that we, that we have in El Segundo locally. And there were several items that we asked the commission and then council to prioritize. None of the, the strategic, none of the strategies were intended to come off the plan. Rather, we were, we're trying to prioritize. We can't do all these things at once. But we'd like to start strategically tackling them one at a time, either as budget or staffing allows. And if the commission recalls, long ago, the, the city entered into a development agreement with DR, the DR Horton Residential Development, and which resulted in an in-lube payment of about $5.3 million. Instead of providing affordable housing on-site, they negotiated a deal with council at the time to pay the equivalent in financial value of $5.3 million, with the intention of that contributing towards the city's efforts in either policy development or physical development that, that generated affordable housing in El Segundo. So the strategic plan, or the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, is really intended to, to implement a roadmap of either a, how we spend down that $5.3 million, how do we generate additional new revenues for that $5.3 million, and other programmatic approaches, just contributing to the production of affordable housing in El Segundo. So the city engaged originally with a firm in 2021 by the name of Many Mansions. I think they also made presentations at the Planning Commission as part of the initial startup of the creation of the strategic plan. Many Mansions was, was a, or is a nonprofit, and the engagement with the city included a provision that there was going to be a no-cost service if they were provided first right of refusal for any future surplus land that the city offered. After that arrangement was made, the state passed new legislation related to the Surplus Land Act, which forced a different process that we'd have to go through should we want to surplus any city property. So essentially, made that agreement or that arrangement null and void. We've been fortunate enough to engage with RSG, who has a fantastic reputation and has been really helpful in navigating the implementation, or the getting us off the ground and implementing the strategic plan here. And in the last six months or so, we've been having monthly meetings that just really start kicking the tires and tackling the priority areas that the strategic plan has, has laid out for us. And so tonight, I really, you know, I think in the last few meetings, there's been, maybe the last couple of months, there's been asked for updates and where are we at? And, you know, what are we doing? And so I thought it'd be a good idea to have RSG here. Give us a sort of high-level overview of, of some of the work that's been done, the conversations that we've had, and also facilitate a study session. And we have some pointed questions from the commission to help us direct where we go with, with some of the policy considerations that we're, that we're making. So with that, I'll hand it over to, to RSG. I don't know who's going to drive, Jim, or, well, I don't know who's driving. Okay. He's going to start us off, but just give us a high-level overview, and then we'll, we'll facilitate us essentially a unstructured study session, sort of free-form, to give us some further direction.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jim Simon. I'm principal with RSG. With me tonight is Jillian Clickman. She's the senior analyst that worked with us on this project. We wanted to take this opportunity, as Michael mentioned, to give you kind of an update as to some of the work that we've been doing so far. Our focus, for the most part, in the last several months has been on sort of two areas of the strategic plan, and that is the local housing trust fund and what options are available for the city to grow that and, and leverage those funds that you have, the $5 million that you received from DR Horton. We also are going to talk a little bit about the live-work policy preference option that the city has been interested in. We've done some policy research and some legal research for you on that as well. Other work that we're going to be doing is focusing on looking at affordable housing project opportunities, including opportunities to do projects where we have, you know, young professionals in the area. So let's first talk about the funding work that we've done so far. We've got a few slides here to go through. As mentioned, the city has $5.3 million held in a trust for future housing activities, but has no ongoing stream of income. And then you'll find out why that ongoing stream point is important in a moment. So, so you have that, that sole source of funds available. You know, that is, that is certainly adequate to fund maybe a single housing project, leveraged with other funds such as low-margin, low-margin housing tax credits and state HCD funds and other sources, which is prevalent today. Most affordable housing projects have numerous funding sources necessary to make them work, even in, in today's challenging environment, even with the additional funds that the state has been pulling forward. Leveraging of those dollars is especially important because you, you need to look at where, where you can maximize and stretch those dollars to get the most bang for your buck. We have looked at where, what opportunities there are to leverage those dollars, and we're going to talk about a little bit of that today. So the first one that we will get into is the, a couple of HCD programs. The one is called the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, or PLHA. These are generated from the $75 recording fee that is added to most real estate transactions. These funds are distributed. In El Segundo's case, via the County of Los Angeles, based upon an equity formula that was established by the county and, and PLHA regulations. That varies by jurisdiction. El Segundo may apply to the county for these funds, but the share that the city may get is not particularly significant. For example, in the most recent year, somebody's smiling already. They must know the answer. The most recent year that, that were, the funds were available was about $12 million, County Y, that was available, of which, had El Segundo applied, it would have been, you're going to hear this correctly, $35,000 that the city could obtain. This is not surprising. Obviously, you know the demographic and, and transit focus that is often in most of these programs, and that is somewhat of a reoccurring theme. As, as you know, we have limited housing funds in California, and so there's a lot of emphasis on trying to leverage projects where they can take advantage of density bonuses and other incentives, you know, little or no parking requirements, and in some cases, to, again, to stretch those dollars as much as possible. So while the amounts may increase as real estate activity changes statewide, this has been a relatively, you know, modest couple of years of real estate activity we've seen. We don't necessarily think that that's a priority for the city to be focusing on. On the other hand, the Regional Early Action Planning, or REAP, as is now called, REAP 2.0 Funds, may be an option worth considering in the future. And these, in, these funds are allocated through SCAG to the city through future NOFA or notices of funding opportunities that are released through SCAG. And so far, there's been six of those, those invitations to submit projects for partnership with SCAG. The projects tend to focus on, you know, really three sort of areas. One is reducing vehicle miles traveled. One is urban infill sites, and the third is advancing fair housing opportunities. As I mentioned, there have been six such opportunities so far, and the city may want to consider exploring those opportunities to partner in the future.
And Jim, by comparison, what do those funds look like compared to the PLHA funds?
Certainly more substantial. I, I, you know, I, I can't speak to how much is allocated each project, but it's a little bit less on the sort of equity lens, like, like the PLHA funds. But, you know, I think in your, in your case, you know, obviously, the proximity to transit is, is a challenge because your, if your, your mass transit is sort of on the other side of town, you do have bus routes.
Three metro stops.
Yes. But the housing sites will need to be in that proximity, right? And as you know, I know you guys are looking at that maybe long-term. So that's, those are a couple that are worth considering. Some other programs that are notable is the, what HCD also calls the Local Housing Trust Fund Program. It's a little bit confusing because it's an HCD program, but it's really a matching program. And those are dollars that HCD leverages or encourages applicants that have an established program to generate ongoing funds into a housing trust, such as if you had, say, a community linkage or commercial linkage fee, which is a program such as, you know, as commercial development occurs, that typically generates demand for housing. A lot of communities have established, like Santa Monica, a commercial linkage fee program, which, which generates some funds that are then deposited into a fund dedicated for affordable housing. Having that type of a program on your books, codified, is especially important because they actually ask, I filled out this application myself personally, you know, having that codified and, and an ongoing stream of funds is especially important. So even though you have the $5 million today, they want to see that ongoing commitment by the city to, to find some ways to generate funds. If you had an inclusionary housing program where it was also generating, like an in-lube fee, that potentially could count as well. But my experience has been that they seem to favor things that are a little bit less, you know, vague in terms of, you know, some problem with an IHO is obviously, well, you certainly had someone gave you money, but in some cases, it could be built on-site in which you have no such ongoing stream of revenues. So, you know, commercial linkage fee is certainly one option. There may be other things that the city could explore. There are also multi-family housing and home ownership, no, super NOFAs that have been available. There's a program called Cal Home, for example, which is up to $200,000 per unit that HCD provides. We've worked in the southeast LA area with one community that's been able to, to attract those funds. There is, that is, a lot of these other HCD programs are highly competitive, so it is a bit of a challenge that sometimes for a community like El Segundo to, to score well, to get those, those things, just the same problem with some of the tax credit programs. But, you know, if, if I was to look at this list that we kind of have in front of you, the LHTF program is probably the one that says, you know, some real potential as well as the REAP 2.0 program. Those could be leveraged and to, to complement the $5 million you have presently. The other programs that we've suggested to include, because you, you are obviously in an area where you have some brownfield sites in and around the city, and I wouldn't want to overlook that, these funds, because there has, at least in the prior federal administration, been a pretty vociferous effort to try to increase things through, through the infrastructure program that the Biden administration had and other sources. The Department of Toxic Substances Control in California has increased funding for brownfields as well. And these tend to be targeted around a case-by-case basis in terms of site-specifics programs, where you've got an affordable housing opportunity site that you're working on. Or it could be what are, like, studies to do complete Phase One or Phase Two environmental studies to assess whether or not such conditions exist. A brownfield, as you may or may not know, isn't necessarily a site that is known to be contaminated, but a site that is suspected to be contaminated. It's that suspicion of contamination that can keep people away from pursuing development, and sometimes just doing those initial studies can clear the little bit of, let's say, cloud as to whether or not the viability of that site is, is, is there or not. So we'll have to see how the Trump administration handles some of these things, and, and whether or not those funds will be, you know, increased or decreased or what have you. So on these, so on the sort of takeaways here, you know, it's difficult to assure that there will be sufficient funding available from outside sources, for all the reasons that you surely know about here, about the, the community itself. But again, there are the REAP program and then the LHTF programs. Should the city create an ongoing stream of funding, would be probably ones that would merit the most initial consideration. Another thing the city could do is pursue, what more and more cities in California are doing, is pursuing what's known as a pro-housing designation. That sounds scary, probably at first because we don't know what that means, but for the most part, you've just been following the rules. And if you follow the rules, which is like if you've got a adopted housing element, if you've been doing your housing annual reporting and things of that sort, you're eligible to be declared a, a pro-housing city. And that designation is essentially HCD's way of trying to award good behavior, if you will, right? And, and you, you qualify for that. It does avail you to potential grant opportunities that HCD is talking about, you know, really prioritizing around pro-housing designations, which might offset some of the demographic and, you know, exclusiveness, if you will, of, of El Segundo, to, to get some of these resources in. More and more cities and counties are pursuing this on, on an ongoing basis. I, I, I feel like every month I see another city or two or three or four that have this on their agenda. It's just a resolution and application process. It's something that might be worth considering for the city, again, to, to look at that. And then, as I mentioned, you know, raising local dollars may be something else that would be important through future development activities that may occur within the city. I know there's a limited amount of development potential here, and if that, if that is, if that's commercial development, you know, exploring the opportunity for a commercial linkage fee program, or doing it in the vein of a, you know, project-specific activity, like the DR Horton project as a community benefit, or a specific plan where that's embedded in there, and you have some options for how you could go about getting that. And that ongoing stream could not only grow the funds you have, but then, again, avail you to other state programs that might be out there. So I'll kind of stop there and see if there's any questions before we shift into the next topic.
So sorry, I guess met some, some, I guess, basic questions. So you, you said that it would be good for the city to look for an ongoing commitment, to look for additional revenue. So why would we, I'm trying to get around, are we required to do that, or?
No, absolutely not. Yeah, you are, it, it, it's, it's necessary if you want to get, you know, again, there are two programs where I feel like you have the best shot at getting. There's the REAP program, which is a competitive program that's issued by SCAG, you know, applications that they prepare. And obviously, we don't know what each guideline's going to be, so it's TBD as to what the next one looks like and whether or not, how strongly you qualify for that. But the one that I do feel like you would qualify for, if you did have such a program, would be HCD's LHTF program. So that might be one in which, again, having those matching funds locally is essentially the main criteria of what they're looking for. The application's fairly straightforward, and they just want to provide documentation of that, and then see, like, what is the project that you're trying to find? Because usually, it's for project-specific initiatives. It's not for your $10 million, go spend it and let us know what happens. I mean, it's usually, you know, you want to have some project advancing as well as having those matching, that matching program.
So with the $5 million and change that we have in, in a trust, is that, is that?
Unfortunately, not. Yeah. Unfortunately, it's not about the amount of money. It's the establishment of a program that generates some stream of income.
So that doesn't count as a cost share?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it would, it would be helpful for, you know, if you had to develop an opportunity, and, you know, obviously, the developer's going to be looking for local housing contributions to be more competitive in tax credits, for example, or other, other housing programs, funding programs. That $5 million is absolutely critical for that. But in terms of getting these LHTF funds from HCD, you are going to need to have another means to get funding in, in place. So it's not, I don't want you to think that the $5 million isn't helpful. It's helpful, but it's probably going to be helpful more on a specific project, one project, and that's, that's about it.
So development projects?
Right.
To develop affordable housing?
Right.
That could be, okay.
And I, just to add a little additional context, because part of your question was, is it mandatory? Is it required, right? It's not, as Jim mentioned, but I think the, the ripple effect of positive benefits that can come out of a continuous stream results in a lot of other things that, that we can do to satisfy HCD, you know. So HCD is, is all, which helps us, helps us in a future housing element cycle. You know, HCD is always looking for us to further advance a fair and affordable housing, loosen the reins on, you know, regulatory standards that, that make it cost-prohibitive to develop housing, or, or other, other components. One of those other components could be developing a revenue source that helps buy down the cost of the production of affordable housing units. So if you have a developer that, they're going to build, let's say, 50 units on X site regardless, if we had a funding source, if, that we could contribute to making some percentage of that 50 units affordable, that, that sheds a good light on the city with HCD, and it helps us accomplish other goals that, that are related to our commitment and the state's direction to help produce affordable housing units, which also opens the door to additional funding sources and, and other opportunities. The city's also made a commitment to further pursue the housing trust on a regional basis with the COG, and so that can also help towards the contribution towards that, which I, and I think we're going to talk about the housing trust in a little bit as well. But it may not be required, but it definitely helps satisfy other things that might be required of, of the city from a policy standpoint. And there's just a general overall positive ripple effect if, if we can chip away at, at funding affordable housing production.
Yeah, and importantly, there's over 300 units that we're supposed to fulfill in our arena numbers of, of affordable and very affordable or, or low-income. That's a big number.
Yeah. And unfortunately, Mike, I'll, I'll tell you my experience that the local contribution, that even the $5 million, you know, the typical average contribution of local funds is around $150,000 per unit. So you can kind of just do the math in your head, divide that $5 million by 150. You're not going to get to, you know, 300 units, unfortunately. So it's, it's having some other sources is probably going to be pretty critical to do that. You know, I, I, obviously, there's other ways to get affordable housing, non-subsidized affordable housing, but those are things like, you know, micro-units with no parking, might not be something you're looking to see bringing into the community. But there are a few other options out there. But for the most part, yeah, the funding is, is going to be key. Okay, so we'll shift and talk a little bit about the live-work preference policy considerations. And this is some research that we've done, you know, again, talking to, looking at some local other jurisdictions, and Jill will certainly touch on that, but I want to just give you some, kind of some background on, on what we were really asked to take a look at. But I want to just give you some, kind of some background on what we were really asked to take a look at. So as the commission knows, the city's housing strategic plan seeks to encourage future development in the city, to prioritize some housing units for existing members of population as workforce or residents within the city. The first thing to know, of course, is that the federal government provides some limited means for cities to create such fair programs, you know, obviously, under the guise of following along with Fair Housing Act requirements. Local policies can have consequences unintended, perhaps even, that can lead to discrimination. You know, that's especially important for a community like El Segundo because, you know, you've got a community that already has, you know, a disproportionate, you know, kind of population mix relative to the county as a whole, which we'll talk a little about. And obviously, the nature of the housing stock as well. So, so under the Fair Housing Act, seven protected classes include race, religion, natural origin, color, familial status, sex, and gender identity, I'm sorry, and disability. Those disparate impact claims may be brought against a policy or practice that creates a disparate impact on individuals belonging to a protected group. And it means that it creates or increases or reinforces or even perpetuates segregation. So again, you're not necessarily, you know, excluding people from within the community from accessing it. But the fact that the community is somewhat exclusive already, or perhaps to some degree exclusive already, does create some of that issue, may have unintended consequences. So you have to sort of navigate that when you're looking at this. And so here's, you know, just some statistics, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with in terms of, you know, the population breakdown between, you know, owner-occupied and renter-occupied. As you see here, the city is slightly more renter-occupied. And then this graph shows you, this is the household income within the county of Los Angeles. It's about $86,000. And you see how that kind of breaks down by different cohorts within different categories. And, you know, the city itself is almost the inverse relationship of that. So, you know, the portion of the community in which you want to have access to this is something to be very sensitive about, right? Because, again, you want to make sure you're not just prioritizing, you know, residents of the community. So it is a striking kind of comparison. Yet, rent, as you are a slightly more renter population, you've seen increases in the rent year after year, even during COVID, over the past nine years. And this data shows, you know, that the rent burden impacts of the community. Again, I think there's been, this is not a community that's experiencing gentrification. It's experienced, in the past tense, gentrification to a great degree. That certainly is still happening to some degree, but not nearly to the extent of, say, other parts of LA County or the county as a whole, where you've got a smaller percentage of your population that is either rent-burdened or severely rent-burdened. Rent-burdened means they're spending over 30% of their income on rent. A severely rent-burdened is it's over 50%.
So in El Segundo, 13% of our residents are spending more than 30% of their income.
13% are spending more than 50%.
Oh, 50? Okay, wow. Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Jill right now, and she's going to touch bases on a few other elements of this.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jillian Glickman, senior analyst with RSG. So the next portion of the presentation will discuss varying components and factors to consider for El Segundo's policy based on live-work preferences in comparable jurisdictions. So in our initial research, RSG conducted some initial research on the following jurisdictions with tenant preference policies. These include San Jose, Santa Monica, National City, Oakland, and the city of Chula Vista. We did want to note that of the policies researched, approximately two of them have codified these policies in their municipal code, while the other three have adopted these policies through city resolutions. We did also want to note that adopting these policies via resolution can allow for greater flexibility in terms of policy implementation. It can also serve as a more practical step for piloting these processes prior to codifying them permanently. And then the asterisk there, that just notes that two of the five jurisdictions researched, Santa Monica and Chula Vista, did have limited information online regarding their programs. They are included in our research for, based on their information available. But some nuances exist there in regard to what information we were actually able to uncover about their programs and publicly available information that was available online. So when thinking about a live-work policy in El Segundo, there's generally three high-level questions to consider that would shape the framework of the policy. Those include eligibility requirements, who is eligible to receive these preferences, property applicability, which properties are subject to the policy, as well as unit proportion, how many units in a housing development are subject to the policies. And in the following slides, we'll address how other jurisdictions have addressed these elements. So in general, in regard to eligibility requirements, applicants must meet certain AMI thresholds for each affordable unit in addition to one of the following in order to receive the preference on a affordable housing waitlist, for example. We've named a few that were prevalent across the comparable jurisdictions. So, you know, living within a certain radius of the project site. Some mention that, you know, residents need to be one mile within the project site, living within the same council district, having at least one household member whose primary place of residence is in the city. And then the next three discuss employment criteria. So employed by an employer located within the city, participating in an education or job training program, or also having at least one household member who has received and accepted a bona fide offer of employment within the city. And then just to provide some additional context on the examples listed here. So typically, the first two examples, so living within, you know, a certain radius of the project site or within the same council district, we generally see that in geographically larger jurisdictions. So in a city like El Segundo, it's a little bit smaller. It might make more sense to have a more broad criteria. So, you know, just any resident within the city. And then additionally, as far as the employment requirements, while jurisdictions may adopt a combination of the three, including all of them could promote greater inclusivity in regard to employment preferences.
Can I ask you a question? Of that one, if you go back, when the third bullet, I mean, it must have at least one household member whose primary residence is within the city, isn't the point to get people to live in the city? Or so do they, do they already have to live in the city of El Segundo?
Yeah, so the intention of the local preference is to provide for new housing, provide an opportunity for folks who already live, work, or, you know, these, all these different criterions, a preference in either leasing up or purchasing new housing that's produced.
Okay. And also, this is under the category of live-work, right? Is that, and so, you know, my understanding of live-work is always, you know, in a unit. You've got someone who lives, who works downstairs, and they live upstairs. This is a broader context, live in the community, work in the community.
Right.
Is that right?
Right, in that case, yeah.
Okay.
So the next portion of criteria we'll talk about is property applicability or which properties the preference policy might apply to. So three of the comparable jurisdictions that we looked at clearly specified which properties are subject to preference policies, whereas the other two did not explicitly state which ones would be, which properties the policy would apply to. And generally, in the three comparable jurisdictions that did name which properties the policy applies to, we did see them applying it to new city-assisted affordable housing projects in which preference only applies during the initial lease-up of the project. And that's important, so when you're re-leasing units, it's not an ongoing preference. It's only during the initial lease-up of units that become available with the development of a new property. This is assumed to alleviate administrative burden for city staff during policy implementation, also could alleviate any potential confusion from property managers or prospective tenants during policy implementation as well. It can ease some of those things. And then additionally, based on our research, some policies are only applicable to projects that meet more specific parameters. Some policies include a minimum number of units in a project, such as properties with five or more units, certain AMI levels, so deciding whether it applies to units with income levels at 80 or 120% AMI. And then also others also specify the minimum affordability length. So the typical affordable housing covenant length would be 55 years, and those were explicitly stated in the policy.
What is AMI?
Area median income. And then the next portion that we'll get into is the unit proportion, which is really a key component of the policy. Essentially, it's, you know, of X number of units, how many units can a tenant receive this preference for? And we found that this varies greatly between jurisdictions researched. It was anywhere from 15 to 100% of rent-restricted units. We think the city would likely need to conduct a further analysis of demographic conditions in the city to ensure, for the reasons that Jim discussed before, that the policy doesn't create a disparate impact on any protected classes based on that percentage of set-aside units. It's also important to note that there is no single analysis to show that disparate impact. So it does vary among jurisdictions, the way that they chose to conduct these analyses. And it's not the most transparent process, to be frank, from policies that we researched.
So, and unit count is within a project, within a development project? So that's the percentages you're talking about?
Yes, exactly. So if it was 100%, then, you know, say there's 100 units, all 100 have that preference applied to them.
And do you guys have an opinion of what the right ratio is? And maybe that's the magic question.
Can I interject before? So this is actually a little bit of the impetus of why I asked for a study session.
Okay, so that's a workshop question.
Well, no, I mean, it's a good moment because, you know, so, you know, Jim daylighted the need to, you know, really be mindful of the Fair Housing Act. Jillian just sort of reiterated that. And I, and part of this is, and the fact that, you know, what Jillian just explained is it wasn't always a transparent process. And so part of this is, this should be a transparent conversation, and it should be done under the lens of maintaining compliance with the Fair Housing Act and under the spirit of addressing housing affordability by itself, you know, and really just under that lens, you know, alone. And part of the intent of this study session was, more minds are better in this case because, you know, we can sort of throw mud at the wall to see what sticks, but it's helpful when there's more brains throwing mud at the wall. And we can only do so much. And I think in order to really facilitate a transparent conversation, this is the best place to do it and do it publicly. And it can't be the only time we have this conversation. This is the beginning of the conversation. But we wanted to have it early so that we can continue to, that can continue to guide where we take this policy, if we take it. And then, and maybe we get to a point where we decide, you know what? There's not a solution that we think complies with the Fair Housing Act. It's too risky, it's too much liability. But what has been found is there are agencies that have struck that balance, or they believe that they have, and maybe they have yet to be challenged. We don't really know. But this is just sort of the start of that brainstorm. And so that's kind of how we got to where we're at at the moment. In addition to just a good opportunity to update you on the housing strategic, affordable housing strategic plan.
Okay.
That's great context. And I'll just give the example of New York City's tenant preference policy. They adopted a policy in 1988, which gave preference to residents living in the same neighborhood where new affordable units were developed. The policy was eventually challenged in court in 2015, where the plaintiffs claimed that preferences made it more difficult for minorities and persons in other protected classes to move from segregated neighborhoods to more diverse parts of the city and therefore had a discriminatory effect. The parties reached a settlement in which the set-aside was dropped from 50% to eventually 15%. And then this last portion here, we'll just touch on. So we wanted to note that some comparable jurisdictions incorporated tenant eligibility requirements based on displacement risk. These risk analyses often use urban displacement project data as a common source, which predicts the net migration rate of low-income renter households out of a specified geographical area. We did look into these different displacement risk models to see if there was any anticipated low-income renter displacement risk in the city, but found that it was considered low across the city, and that was across various models that we had looked at. Therefore, based on our research, we did conclude that incorporating displacement risk into a policy would have little to no impact, just based on the research that's out there, which is not to say based on the demographic data that was introduced earlier in the presentation may merit a tenant preference policy, but for that specific portion of the policy, we didn't see that evidence being present.
Can you explain that displacement risk?
Yeah, I don't understand what that is.
Yeah, so generally, that would refer to, like, new development coming in, price of housing rising, which limits the ability for tenants within a certain unit to mobilize and move to a different unit. So, for example, if you have relatively low rent and you choose to move, but all the rent across the city is rising, then you have a reduced ability to move and higher displacement risk because you're more likely to have to move outside of city limits in order to get the rent that you were receiving before.
Gotcha. I still don't get it. So we're saying that if you are a renter now and you need to move, we think that the rents here are stable enough and there's enough availability so that if someone needs to move, they can find a place that they could afford to move at the same price level? Is that what we think?
It's more, it's more of a function of, I think, what's naturally affordable housing. For example, you know, if you look over in Inglewood, you've seen, you know, massive displacement starting to occur as that area has gone through some recent gentrification. And, you know, the issue is the displacement of a household from, let's say, what might be a relatively affordable unit, like two-bedroom unit, let's say, and when they're moved out because the developer buys the project and displaces the residents, that there's fewer and fewer of those similar units available on the market today. Your situation, as I kind of said earlier, in many ways, your gentrification has already occurred. It's more of a past tense, and that's, I'm not saying it's good or bad. It's just a fact of the matter. So there's proportionately a much smaller portion of your population that would be impacted by that, again, because of the demographics of the community and things of that sort.
But I guess if I think about the graph that we put up earlier that has the percentage of burdened and severely burdened renters. The number wasn't extreme, but it wasn't negligible.
Right.
If any of those people have to move anywhere within the city, there would be a question of whether they would be able to afford to continue to live here. I'm just wondering, maybe if there's a little bit more data that you could share that underlies this notion that we are a low renter displacement risk? Well, let me ask this. If those, would those people, the 13% that are paying 50% of the rent, might they qualify for some of these affordable units that might take the place?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a valid question, but also, it's sort of two different data sets. One is the question of, are they, are they, are they rent-burdened? Are they severely rent-burdened? And the answer is 13% and 35% is yes, or 35% and 13%, respectively. And then the other question is, can they find housing at a similar or same cost as what they're paying today? They're still going to be rent-burdened. But the question, the second question is, the displacement factor is, even if they're still rent-burdened, can they find housing in and around the same price point? And it's not a question of, is housing expensive here? Because that's, there's only one answer to that question. Housing is expensive. But the second question is just, could they find the same product in the same price range? And I think the data that we've found is that essentially in El Segundo, they could. And maybe there's a second development cycle that we're just about to kick off, the land use element update, which will probably trigger some other development cycle over the next couple of decades. And that might trigger another round of potential displacement because things will start to skyrocket as development comes in. But currently, right now, the displacement factor is low because generally, they could find other expensive housing in the same price range.
And, yeah, and if I, the models, which are, UCLA has it on, has an urban displacement project. You can look at the maps. We didn't pull it into our presentation. But it also takes into account things such as, you know, land economics and things of that sort. So really, it's a question of how much redevelopment activity is likely to- So really, it's a question of how much redevelopment activity is likely to happen within this market, say, in other places where it's much, it's, it's, it's targeting neighborhoods where land costs and property values are much lower.
I guess it, it does seem like a complicated formula in the sense that if you focus this only on renter displacement due to new development and because El Segundo is constrained in how much new development might be out there, I guess you would come to this conclusion.
But it doesn't mean you don't need affordable housing, to your point.
Right, and that anytime renters have to move around within the city, I would struggle. And, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are about the stability of rent rates here in the city, but my anecdotal evidence would say anytime renters move within the city, they're paying more than they were paying when, from wherever they moved from.
Yeah.
And if that's true, every time a renter has to move for any reason, the risk that they would have to leave the city is probably relatively high, given that forty percent of them are already rent burdened.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the piece I was just trying to poke on a little bit more. It's like, how do we come to that conclusion? What does that mean? And are we missing an opportunity because we turn the page really quickly and say, oh, well,
And we can definitely follow up with, with staff and discuss that further.
Jim, can you explain a little bit of, so, I mean, nobody, I mean, we didn't invent this data. But can you explain the urban displacement project, like where does that come from?
Yeah, so they're looking at, obviously socioeconomic data, real estate market data, and, and just development trends and activities that is, all of that is kind of going into their models that they then map, in this case, all of the LA region. And have identified areas that are more susceptible to displacement and areas that are less susceptible to displacement. That doesn't mean that people who are getting displaced, or there are people that are getting displaced and having to move, but it's all, it's relative, right? So, as I mentioned, I, I use the example of, of Inglewood because it's been a prominent area in the last ten years. And there, you see your rents going up at the most five percent a year. That has definitely not been the case over on the other side of the four oh five.
Sure.
So those are some of the, those are some of the factors that are going into the model and analysis. And we can give, you know, Michael, kind of a summary of that to share with you.
I, I think, I, I had a very similar reaction, only because anecdotally, it's like, well, somebody locked in their rent, it only gets increased, you know, whatever percent per year. So naturally, when they move, it's gonna, they're gonna be priced out. But, and so I, you know, part of the challenge was, look, if we can't lean on this, this data set to just pick a number and say, hey, this is an easy percentage to say, these are the folks being displaced, then what can we, you know, part of the question is, if we can't lean on this, then what can we lean on? Because we don't have control over this data set. And if it doesn't tell the story we want it to tell, then we gotta find what does tell the story that makes sense and it's, and is justifiable, you know? Because anecdotally, it's easy to feel, I felt very much the same way and was, was saddened a little bit. Or actually, you know, that this was a scenario because it wasn't as easy to just point to a number and say, gosh, work done. Local policy preference is, 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 is easy to explain, but now it's not.
It's, it's, yeah, and it is, it is surprising to see. I've, I've worked around the state and, you know, for, for years, of course, everybody, we talk about how San Francisco, maybe not so much anymore, you know, people were being priced out of the city. And yet, you know, when you, when you looked at things, it was, it was East Bay that was the greatest risk of displacement because of how these market forces were affecting things. It's again, that displacement had occurred in one market and people, those folks were moving into another area, which was driving up and pushing people further east. It's a very similar situation to what you see here. So it's, it's again, I think it's a matter of degrees, that's, that's probably the aspect of it. That's a little bit hard to get, you know, right around here. You know, I'd also comment that all of this economic data we've been focusing on has been household data. And you have a workforce which, you know, if, if you were to do a commercial linkage fee study, for example, you would explore what are the wages of people that are working within the city? That may present a very different demographic profile of your local workforce. Service workers in downtown, workers all, all over, who probably don't live within the city and can't afford to live in the city. And, you know, those may be things that could be, A, I'll just say that SCAG would be interesting because it would potentially reduce vehicle miles traveled of, you know, dealing with the, the, how do we house people who work within the city better? And that might be an angle that I think could be revealing for what this policy could be and how you might want to shape it.
And then I'll hand it back to Jim.
So, so, yeah, these are, like, we've kind of just been recapping a lot of this. And I just talked about the, I just talked about the first point, I didn't even look at that. But the, obviously, so you've got the workforce element to consider. That was not something we've studied and a little bit more, that's a sort of deeper dive into different data sets that would have to be evaluated for a local preference policy. But I think there's some merit to considering, you know, the workforce as a, as a particular unique element here, even more over, more so than maybe most communities, given the different conditions that we've seen. There's also the limited development pipeline, and that's another thing to, to ignore. So, you know, for the most part, all of these policies that we've been discussing are implemented on future new development. Well, you know, we don't have a lot of those future new development projects within the city. There's a limited number of those. And so, you know, like a lot of things we deal with, when we deal with housing policy, unfortunately, things like inclusionary housing and, and, you know, things like a local housing preference. Unfortunately, you're not, you're not transforming the immediate market in all housing units and all residents today. You know, if the city does build, you know, a thousand units or something in the next current, or current cycle, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head. But, you know, that, that, you're only talking about that segment of the units, not the entirety of that, which makes it difficult. There are other policy things that, you know, some cities have tried, you know, rent stabilization ordinances and things like that sort. But that's not what we're talking about here today. So, and it is, it is only really on the incremental new change and the new units and what these policies may affect. So I think that's something to keep in mind, too, is the impact of such a program may be somewhat muted, unfortunately, given the, you know, again, unless you see significant redevelopment occurring, say, on the east side of town. So, our, our kind of recommendations, and we spent, we also work for Santa Monica, not on their housing, on this housing policy thing, but other things. We, we did discuss with them a little bit about their program. And theirs, theirs is fairly simple. It's not, it's not a rent, it's not a percentage specifically, for example, that they've identified. You know, we would probably, you know, just out the gate, you know, I probably wouldn't go higher than fifteen percent. But again, I think there's some need to maybe consider some of the things that we've discussed tonight, including the workforce aspects as well. And probably limiting that to the initial lease-up period. Again, you know, is it possible to have it be a perpetual program? Yes, but now you would have to have staffing to collect and monitor a rental, you know, an interest list, if you will, of qualified tenants that is perpetually being updated so that when a unit becomes available, and let's say Jill's the landlord here, you know, she can call up somebody at the city and say, okay, I've got a unit that's available, who's on the list? And you can't say, well, give me, get back to you in two weeks. Because that's, you know, really inconveniency, you know, the landlord. So those programs, you know, when you have something that's not just the initial lease-up period, it's, it's a pretty robust level of administration. Because you're not only having to, you know, get the list together, but you're also having to check and make sure people are still looking for units and where they're at, have they found something, have they left the area, et cetera, so.
Would you ever recommend the city take on that role? Or is that a management company that is best served?
I think for a city of this size, and, and again, given the small number of units that you have in your pipeline, I don't know that I would recommend that that's a wise use of your resources. It would be a lot of resources for, again, a pretty small number of units that would benefit from that.
So what would happen to that unit then? If somebody moves out of one of these units, then it's no longer, they just go market rate and it's no longer?
Well, no, because remember, these are affordable housing units for the first, for the most part in the first place. So the question is more about, not do they go market rate, but is it, it would still be an eligible household, it just may not necessarily be an El Segundo resident or worker. There are communities, and we work in a lot of communities, where there's still ways to mitigate even that to some degree without the benefit of, say, formal policy. In some places, for example, in Hercules in Northern California, in Goleta, we've helped them develop sort of marketing policies so that units that do become available, they're, the marketing is sort of targeting people within the community and the workforce. So there's advertising that's happening and people are informed of that opportunity. So that's something that generally, you know, has been, you know, survived the scrutiny, if you will, in terms of the Fair Housing Act.
How do, how do people typically apply for these things? How do they find out if they're eligible, if they, you know, are, are a candidate for these sorts of houses?
Yeah, usually it's, it's just, you know, and, and that's something that when you bring on an affordable housing developer, if it's a hundred percent affordable project, they'll, they'll put that out there and they will have events and, if you will, fairs and things like that sort to, to invite, help with people to submit. Sadly, these are highly oversubscribed, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, rare to see hundreds or thousands of people apply for a relatively small number of units. And so, because that's, and that's not an El Segundo problem, obviously, that's a nationwide challenge. But, yeah, that's, that's typically how it's done. And, and, you know, when the city does engage with an affordable housing developer, those are the types of things that are embedded into any affordable housing agreement to spell out what that marketing plan is going to be and how they're going to go about doing that. How's it going to be fair, right? You know, we often recommend use of lottery systems, for example, to, to do that. So there's no, there's no question as to somebody getting favorable treatment or discriminated.
I'm trying to think, are there ways that don't violate fair housing where you can give preference to certain kinds of local workers? I'm thinking teachers or firefighters or?
Teachers, police, fire.
Yeah, the, the fair housing thing's on my list. And just to add to that, wouldn't the income requirements kind of resolve those issues of the fair? Because I guess that's the, the basic gist, right?
Right, it's not the income eligible no matter what, for sure, yes.
So none of those would be?
Well, you know, you know.
None of those would be, I guess. Because they're all.
Fairly competent, I mean, not fairly, but.
No, I mean, teachers, teachers and even, yeah, that's, that's not uncommon, yeah.
I would agree with you, but I would also say I still don't know that they would fall into like lower income, though, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's based on the area, the AMI, the, the area medium in.
County, county median income, yeah.
So, yeah, maybe, they, they might.
They would be a maybe, right? Maybe. I would love it if they, you know, those are the, those are the groups of people that I think of immediately when I think of who would we like to live here who doesn't? And those are the people I, I often think of first. There's like our teachers who can't live here, or our fire employees who can't live here.
But even, I think, you know.
Our city employees.
And city employees.
City employees.
Our city employees who can't live here.
You know, they all, I think that they all range, right? I mean, there could be custodial folks or, you know, people that they, you know, I think would qualify. So I've, for, in my notes, I think that we should have kind of these tiers of employment, depending on what they do for the city. I don't want some, you know, the, I don't know, the vice president of Raytheon or Mattel or something to come in and take advantage of this. I think that there should be definitely tiers of employment. But I think that also the location of employment is kind of important to me and I'm sure to Jay, too, because we don't want people on the other side to, we would prefer people to live and work on this side of town to reduce the VMTs' travel. If they're going, driving, they're getting in their car and going there, then that's a whole nother thing. But if they can, they work in this building perhaps, or at the Illinois building, then they could ride their bike or walk and things like that. So, yeah, there should be tiers of location of, of their employment and their housing and their, what they do, depending on, you know, if they're city, if they work for the city or a private company.
Yeah, we, we've also been doing some work partnering with, I, I don't know if these opportunities exist with the school district, but in some, in, with Compton Unified, Overtona Project in Willowbrook, where it's their property that they're redeveloping. And because it's theirs, they have some special, you know, ability to sort of target teachers, for example, on that project. It's, it's in the, it's in the future, it's not yet built. But, you know, so those, there are some opportunities to do that, like with schools, for example.
Is there any technology that's being brought to bear to help with the administrative side of managing these maybe potential pipelines of applicants? If you had a pool of low income or lower-cost housing that people would want to apply for? Like, is there any technology? Like, I'm trying to think, oh, once you get on the list, is there a way to push something out to those people to see if they're still, you know, if they're still interested, haven't found places, left the city? All those kind of things where it's not some new department we have to create where someone's calling and emailing these people, but some other way?
That is, that is, that is generally what happens already. I think the bigger issue is that, you know, when someone's applying or putting their name on the interest list, how much information are you going to ask for at that point in time? Right? I mean, to, to be eligible for an affordable unit, you have to be able to demonstrate income and, you know, and that your income doesn't exceed a certain limit. Let's say you do that in twenty twenty-three, well, now it's twenty twenty-five. We don't, is it the same number? Is it a different number? Have you gotten a different job? Are you still living in there? So it's that, it's the, more of the updating part of it, that's the burden, to be honest?
That's what I'm thinking about, too, in terms of like a technology, like, hey, this. I'm thinking of other processes that I see in business where you are qualified for a certain thing or there is a compliance aspect that needs to be updated on an annual basis. And if there's any technology that could be brought to bear that goes, hey, you, you know, you were eligible for this, it's time to update it, change these three things, and send it, hit send, and now it updates the list and it, it helps us to reduce that burden and maybe makes it, and maybe there's a breakpoint at which point it makes sense for us to care as opposed to it's too expensive for us to care. Just the thought, I don't know, because you guys work with other, with lots of other people, if there's anything you see out there that helps.
Yeah, I, I, again, I go back to, it's, it's really a function of how many units are in the future. Because if it's only, you know, thirty, forty units, you know, if it's, you know, is that, what's, what's the amount that the city wants to spend on administration to justify that? That's, that's a kind of value discussion that you guys need to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we have to see how much that all costs. I, 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 I'm struggling to see how that, that, how big that burden is, but, I mean, you know better than I do.
Right, the administrative burden?
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, you mentioned that if, if somebody moves out, then, you know, and the landlord says, hey, we need somebody, you said, oh, get back to me in two weeks. I mean, that doesn't sound bad to me because usually you have a thirty-day notice and then two weeks to clean up the place. So you have a six-week, if the landlord is diligent, gives us, gives us notice that we need somebody, somebody's moving out in thirty days, and then we have about six weeks to, to find somebody. I think that's, that's doable. I mean, if we just mass email the, the fifty on the waiting list and whoever replies, whoever's the lowest number on that list and qualifies gets it. I mean, it doesn't, I don't, I just don't see how, what the administrative burden is and how, I don't know that that process is going to be, take too long. I don't think you're putting the landlord out for, you know, having a vacant unit for that long. I mean, that's just my.
Yeah, I, I think there's going to be no shortage of applicants.
Exactly, yeah.
If there's a break in the questions or, or, I just want to, Jared, this is not a public hearing technically, but I think we do have members of the public.
I've been thinking about Mr. Pickaver over there.
It might be a good opportunity to invite folks up if you want to.
Sure, that's a great idea. I don't need to open it to public, sure. John, come on up, what do you got?
All right, so my name is John Pickaver, El Segundo resident here in town. I'm here on behalf of the group Sea Change. We care a lot about these issues, particularly affordable housing. I came here with just like kind of a small thing to bring up, it was a very interesting presentation. Thank you, I, I rent here in town. And just to add on to that discussion, if I were to try it out, I was looking just pools, just on apartments.com, there's other places to look, but the same breakdown of my current situation, the next closest one is seven hundred dollars more than what I pay now. So again, that's just adding to the anecdotal of it all, but just thought I'd mention that. I came to speak more so about the staff report, which is, let's see, I wrote this down. It's page eight on the staff report or page twenty-two of thirty-one in the entire agenda packet. It talks about a community survey that was done. And I remember this survey coming out and I appreciate the community's input being included. And the question was, let me see, actually, brought in front of me. The question was. The question was, uh, from one to five, uh, where would your first choice be in what of El Segundo, excuse me, they cut off, let me see. Rank one to five, with one being your first choice in what you would like to see new housing built, where you would like to see new housing be built in El Segundo. And the staff report uh, references that question and it says, uh, you know, you have it in front of you, I don't have it in front of me, but Smoky Hollow, um, other areas, but it actually leaves out what was the highest selected answer, which was housing east of PCH. Now, it wasn't by much, but you know, if you're looking at this graph here, I don't know if this will pick up, like it, it is an amount you can notice. And there was only one choice for east of PCH while the other four options were all west of PCH. So I think it'd be interesting to break that down. And if you were to parcel out spots east of PCH, would that continue to be higher, rank higher than those? Because you could obviously make the case, well, sure, twenty-five percent said east of PCH, but the other seventy-five chose the options west of PCH. But I don't think that would be a fair comparison. But I wanted to bring that up. I don't know why it necessarily wasn't included in there. I think the survey is from twenty twenty-one. So I know there's been a lot of different staff turnover there, but I think it's important to add that perspective. And I bought, brought copies of, um, that survey there that could help inform discussions and understand in your presentation and the scope that you have with this strategic plan is limited to what that is. Like, housing east of PCH isn't even on, on the table. Getting back to the survey, I, I think there was a meeting in December twenty twenty-three where Mayor Pro Pimentel, that's what he was then, now, now the mayor, uh, referenced this survey, was surprised that it was even in the report. And there was like eleven hundred people that filled it out. And he's like, we don't know who filled that out. We don't know where their URLs is. Let's have that out from the report. Now, I would venture to guess they just didn't like the results they got back. Because if you look at the first thing, three words you would use to describe El Segundo, and it's just this word chart, uh, safe, community, friendly, charming, small town charm. So to me, it sounds like the people that were filling the survey out do live here. And that's, that's the answers that I hear. So whatever, um, you know, power that you have to, in, in recommendation, just to kind of engage the community more on this issue and see if you can expand your scope, because there's a lot of work going into this right now. I think what, I, I don't know how many affordable units it is, but I think it's around five hundred of varying degrees. And if you look at the PCH Pacific Coast Commons model, uh, that's like ten to fifteen percent. That would be like five thousand new units we would need across town to hit those numbers. And right now, we're trying to put them all west of PCH. So I feel like we're just kind of pushing a big rock on one side of the room and then just pushing it back on the other side. It's, it's an impossible task to try to hit these numbers. And I, I think this live work thing is certainly a potential to chip away at it, but I, I, I came here tonight really to reference that survey, to bring to light to you, in case you may have forgotten those results, that there are people in the community that do want to see housing explored east of PCH. As you may remember, I ran a city council campaign, uh, did not win, but essentially ran on this issue, lost by less than a percentage point. I feel like everyone that I talked to knew that's what I stood for, and that's a large, uh, segment of the population, thirty-five, five hundred people, um, out of ten thousand voters that, that felt strongly enough to cast a vote for me when I was leading with this issue. So again, I would just encourage you to see if you can expand your scope so we can realistically be, you know, a good pro housing city. That's the other thing I wanted to mention. I was shocked that we qualify for that status, having not built an apartment complex in El Segundo in almost forty years. So I hope we can continue to chip away at this and just look at all the options. So thank you for the, the time and I look forward to watching the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, John.
Ju- just to clarify, are we designated as a pro housing?
No, no, we just have the, I was commenting on, you said we would qualify to pursue that distinction.
Oh.
And that-
We could, we could pursue it.
And that just honestly shocked me, but-
Writing a decree. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I was, I, on that score, I was thinking that would be a thing we would pursue that would require us to do some things, not we're already there.
Yeah.
And therefore we just need to get the stamp of approval from, from someone.
Right. Well, Mr. Pickaver, thank you. Um, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to talk about that very thing tonight as well. So appreciate you actually bringing the chart, the graph, because I do remember that survey. So, okay?
I think that concludes the formal presentation. And so, you know, we're open to additional questions, thoughts, suggestions related to the local housing preference policy, um, just additional, uh, just thoughts in, in general related to, to housing, um, that, that the commission might have.
Sure. I, I have two questions for the RSG team, just because you guys are in this space. And I'll ask them both. Uh, one is, i- is the, the housing type that you're recommending for affordable almost always a rental unit versus a for sale? And so, yeah, please.
I, I, I wouldn't probably say recommending because unfortunately I, I'm, and my business partner feels the same way, you know, the only way you're gonna, we need to create the, uh, community wealth. And, um, we just saw the devastation of that in Altadena. So, um, and ownership is certainly a key element to that. Unfortunately, there are very few subsidies for ownership of affordable housing. It's extremely difficult to do. Um, there's really basically one substantive program to do that. Um, and it's especially difficult to do that at the lowest income levels because usually there's things like homeowners associations to take care of common area maintenance, and that might be all they can afford to pay. And then the worry you have, of course, is well, what happens if they can't pay that? And then the HOA could foreclose. And so it just gets to be very, very difficult in high cost markets to do something other than rental.
I, I just, I guess I just wanted confirmation of that. We went through that exact exercise with the D.R. Horton thing. And, you know, those Horton units were supposed to be for sale. And we looked into it. It's just like, it, it will not work. It's just too hard to, to, it's unsustainable.
Yeah.
So, and then my second question is, um, the developers that might come in and, and create some of these communities, these projects that, that would qualify for these, do they tend to be um, developers that are very much in this affordable housing space? Or are kind of regular market rate developer, um, kind of become, uh, expert at this with, with proper guidance?
It's a great question. Um, I would see, you know, up until maybe three years ago, it was much more the domain of affordable housing developers. When market rate construction started to slow down as market rate projects became more infestable, I, I, I've had many market, market rate affordable, uh, de- apartment developers come to me and say, we want to do an affordable project. And, and my always advice to them was, well, you need to find a partner that is not a, obviously a property manager who's done this before, but also a partner on the investment side, because the, the climate right now, if, you know, at the SCAG Annual Conference, Southern California Associated Nonprofit Housing Annual Conference is like, you know, talking about how this is, this has never been, there's never been a more difficult time to build affordable housing than the moment we're in right now. And that is because you see projects having to go back for multiple rounds of tax credit applications because of cost escalation or the inability to get, uh, a capital stack, all the funds that are necessary to make it work together in time. Um, and, you know, we're seeing more, a bit fewer and fewer uh, affordable housing projects getting completed and more and more projects sort of extending out multiple years and, and longer sadly. Um, so it is a, it's a really challenging time right now for someone who's not in that affordable housing space because experience points do sort of, are, are, and, and, you know, if, if you're going to potentially give your five million dollars to somebody, you want to make sure can they actually get this done? What happens if they fail? We want to make sure we get our five million back and that type of thing. And, and, um, so there's, there's a lot that goes into, to that. So I, I hate to say that it's, 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 you know, exclusively the domain of affordable housing developers, but more and more, it's at least a partner that's, that's experienced with either a nonprofit or affordable housing, uh, for profit developer, affordable housing developers is, is a critical component of any team.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, two, two questions. One's should be pretty quick. So what is the typical minimum number of units to apply? If, if we do fifteen percent, I can't imagine, you know, four unit complex, fifteen percent is a lot different than a fifty percent of a five hundred unit complex.
Yeah, um, you know, generally speaking, you know, your minimum project size these days is, uh, for affordable housing development is going to be in the area of about fifty or so units, um, to, uh, at the, at the lowest end. They tend to top out at around a hundred units. Um, that doesn't mean there aren't bigger affordable housing projects, but it's more about a phased approach. Like, we've seen projects that had, you know, maybe three, three hundred units, but they're breaking it down into phases, again, for financing purposes. So, uh, you know, what the, the range tends to be is in that fifty to a hundred. That's kind of the, the range that you typically see affordable housing developments build.
Okay, and then my second question, back to the, uh, the, these recurring revenue generating programs. Well, what kind of examples do you have of those? And would our five million dollars and then change be able to be like, I, I guess, a starter, a, a, a starting point for that that could help us get it?
Yeah, again, I, I, my best example is like a, um, well, for the most part, you've got a, you, you get a few options. Obviously, you know, I know the, the cog's been looking at doing a trust fund and something like that. But that would need a, again, some sort of tax mechanism or some other voluntary ongoing contribution of people's general funds, what have you, to make something like that work. That's one option. Another option would be obviously a tax increase. And you've seen jurisdictions uh, around the state to start exploring that on at least a regional basis. A, a, a third option is a, what I, what I call a, a commercial linkage fee or an inclusionary housing and LUFEE. Now, both of those two require development to be happening to generate those dollars, right? So if you have limited opportunities for future development, um, even creating the fee program alone is great, but, you know, you also have to be realistic about, well, is that, how much is it going to change? It, it could still help you get the other funds and leverage your dollars. Uh, but it may not, it's not going to be the panacea in your case, because you just don't have that much development opportunity in the future to, to levy that on.
Uh, although, commercial development, you could levy it on that, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But I don't know how much, you know, commercial development, you know, in the five year pipeline or ten year pipeline there is that, that could be done. We've also, I guess the other option would be sort of a community benefits approach where, you know, you do a development agreement and you negotiate a community benefit. That would be very similar to the D.R. Horton model though, but that's not going to be an ongoing stream of funds. It would help you. And in that case, you know, our advice to you would be to package those dollars and put out a notice of funding availability and say, hey, y'all, we got five million or we got five million plus. And give us your proposals for what you could do with this.
Right.
But, you know, that's still probably not going to be enough. That's not going to be three hundred units, so.
It, it's, it's a project. Yeah, right.
I, I think that the fifteen percent is, is a good number. It's a reasonable number. I, I don't know how I feel about it, limiting it to the initial lease up. I think that we should, and somehow, if we can, keep it going for these preferred renters.
Put it in perpetuity.
Yeah, so somehow.
Or at least some longer cycle. I mean, because in my brain, you're going to go through this, someone's going to live there for two, three, four years, and then it all goes away.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, I would hate that. So something that either puts a time, a longer time limit on it or a way to continue to cycle through.
One, one thing you could do, I was just giving you ideas here, is, you know, if you apply it to just specific future development projects, you could embed that into the development agreement with a developer and basically put the administrative burden on them. You know, you're going to get this project, we're going to give you our assistance. In exchange for that assistance, you're going to agree to run the project this particular way. So essentially there, they are the ones that have to maintain the interest list. And they are the ones that have to make sure that whatever the threshold is that you establish is getting met on an ongoing basis. That takes it off of staff's there's some transparency sometime questions that come into play, but, you know, there's ways to, to mitigate that too, so.
Seen that work?
Yeah, yeah, on, on projects where, again, that's a site-specific development.
Right.
And, and you may, and that might work for you here, because you, you know, you're not looking, you're not a jurisdiction where you're going to have thirty of these projects and thirty different ways to do it. It's probably less than a handful. So it might be something to consider for you as well.
Sorry, because they're going to do the same thing we would be saying to do is figuring, trying to figure out what the cost of that administrative burden is in addition to the revenue reduction from affordable housing units. And do they, does that mess up the penciling out of a project, whereas the city might have more resources and be willing to, you know, handle that versus messing up the, the, the spreadsheet with an additional unknown administrative burden?
Yeah. I, I think that all be, it's all part of the negotiation with the DA. You know, if that's a, a known dollar amount at some point, then that's also a choice that council could make on, okay, well, let's, let's reduce the development impact fees by X dollar to help it pens, you know, there's, there's a lot of levers that can be pulled. In lieu of allocating in staff time or incurring the additional cost and overhead pension, all that jazz, that staff, you know, new staff or new divisions. I'll tell you, in, in Culver City, um, they have both. They have a full, robust twelve to fifteen person staff, including part timers, that administer, monitor, audit. Um, and then they also engage in development agreements where the, the burden is on the builder and developer or the operator of the facility, um, who then coordinate with the staff. And so they, they, they're big enough to, to need both, um, but they've also found some economies of scale, uh, through, through functioning in, in that manner.
Good. And, and, and typically, um, you know, how are these units subsidized? Uh, obviously you get these grants and there's state money and, and, you know, is there, is there one answer for how, what, what encourages a developer to give up some market rate units in order to, to do affordable units?
You're, we've been mostly talking about a hundred percent affordable projects today, so, but if you're talking about something where it's a mix of that, um, that, there's things in state law already that they can do that called density bonuses, where they have to provide that in exchange for a density bonus. And the, the motivation typically is exactly that. More units gets more income. So even if that income is less than say, the prevailing market rate for the project, that additional income is still income to the project that helps-
They're covering it with more front doors.
Right.
Yeah. But, but how about a hundred percent?
For a hundred percent affordable? Yeah, I mean, again, it's, it's a, I, I, I've just, I'm working with Santa Monica right now on a couple of projects that, that, that are on, down on, um, the end of Third Street Promenade. And, um, you know, they're, the, the developers are having to put in, the the developers have this thing called a developer fee, which is basically pays for what their cost of services is. And more and more affordable housing developers are what's called deferring that developer fee, which means they're not getting paid for the project that they're working on today. And there's lots of technical and labor and like costs, right, to, to design and negotiate a project. And sometimes fifty percent or sixty percent, I've seen, um, projects that are, they're, they're collecting that over the future and future cash flows, the project, which gives you kind of a rough idea of how challenging the market is right now.
Yeah, and do people have patient enough money to do that these days?
Well, they're obviously asking for more, but still, it's, it's a, it's, it's difficult. Yeah, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
And that's exactly where they asked us to help us, help them take a look at.
I was also going to bring up the question that John Pickaver asked, and, and I don't know that that's necessarily a question for, for RSG, but you know, when you read the, uh, the matrix that was in the packet, uh, affordable housing focus area. Community surveys show residents want affordable housing in high resource areas. Smoky Hollow, west side of PCH between Imperial and El Segundo, east Imperial Avenue, downtown El Segundo, workforce housing in Smokey, uh, Smokey Hollow. So, I mean, to me, that was, it was very glaring right off the bat, that east of PCH was not on there. And I realize it's not zoned for that now. Um, but, you know, when, when you think about, it's hard to understand how to increase density in this town. We're landlocked. You got to go up, you got to go tighter. People were freaked out about parking and traffic already. And, um, you know, we got, I don't know how many uh, thousands of square foot of, of office, uh, right now, uh, that is, you know, kind of sit, sitting empty on the east side of PCH. And so it's, it, it seems to me that it would be hard to have this conversation seriously without talking about east of PCH. And so I just wondered how, uh, why, why it's not even in the, in the language.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good, it's a good question. So, um, there, there was a time where one of the initial drafts referenced the survey, um, and I do recall- um, and I do recall the comment made at the council meeting. I wasn't here when that survey was done, so I can't really speak to the methodology or the validity or, or invalidity. I am really sort of agna, agnostic towards the survey itself. I'm not agnostic towards the, um, the fact that there's several opinions on where housing should be built. The Affordable Housing Strategic Plan is not about where to build housing in general. The Affordable Housing Strategic Plan is a guide to, for us to develop policy so that when housing is built, regardless of where it's at, there's a policy in place to facilitate the production of affordable housing. One of the goals identified was this focus area program. And when developing the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, or at least finalizing this document, we could only do so where housing is currently permitted today, right? So if there's a time, and there will be a time, where, where next month we'll be awarding a contract for the general plan land use settlement update, that will be a two-year process where the focus is the discussion about land use citywide, um, and housing is the land use. And so I can only imagine that naturally that conversation will happen and it needs to happen, um, and it will be far more, uh, reliable and in real time than a survey that was produced in twenty twenty-one as part of the housing element kickoff. That was done online, you know, these will be in person, in real time, uh, with elected and appointed and residents, um, and business leaders and community leaders, uh, and stakeholders. And that will be the most appropriate time to talk about where housing gets built. But this document, uh, and I don't want to understate the importance of that conversation when it's appropriate, but this document's really about wherever housing's permitted today, this is about facilitating affordable housing production in those areas. If those areas change in the future, obviously we got to update this document. And so that, that's the genesis of Y I from a director's standpoint and staff standpoint, we elected to focus this and, and remove some of those references at that time.
No, that, that, that's a, that's a proper answer. This document is about how to do it wherever you're putting houses and you can only have effect on what is on for it currently. So, which, which is why these focus areas are, it's, that's, that's why this list is that way. So I get that. So I guess there's some, some bigger issues to, uh, to solve in that way. So, okay. Any other thoughts?
I, I just want to add that I agree with Kevin that I think that the fifteen percent sound like a good, uh, number to adopt to, for this, for this conversation, for this meeting, for this hearing.
I mean, it sounds good, it's, it's, but it's abstraction, right? Like, we got to get to three hundred affordable units. Fifteen percent of what gets you there, I don't know. We, we keep trying to back into it. I don't know if fifteen makes sense or is it ten or is it whatever gets us to where we need to go?
Well, fifteen percent is just whatever gets built, what, uh, uh, affordable units, what percentage is, is applied to or what, what the local preference is applied to.
Got it.
The housing element itself outlined a whole slew of other strategies of how to build the, um, five hundred units, but three hundred which are, are affordable, uh, including loosening, uh, bureaucratic processes, fees, um, incentivizing through development agreement or, or density bonuses. And, you know, Paul's not here anymore, but, you know, Paul has spent the better part of the last, it's twenty twenty-five, four years implementing these, these policies, um, taking the zone text amendments that the commission has, has considered with the parking reductions and, and the restructuring of, of all of those, those zone tech. I, I mean, oh, most recently the study session that we had on assimilating the S B nine ordinance to, to the R one, uh, standards. All of that is, is different ways of eliminating or reducing the, the development burden on, on developers or the cost on developers to help, uh, maybe stimulate some, some housing production, accessory dwelling units, et cetera. And so, um, that, this fifteen percent is purely about the local preference. I think some of the other things we heard on the local preference in terms of priorities were, um, a tie to different categories of employment or income, right?
And location.
And location, geographic. I don't know if I heard anything else different than what was present. Actually, that was already presented, but in addition to that.
Okay. Excellent presentation, thank you, thank you. You know, just a couple other areas that, that anecdotally that, that I see, people that I talk to around town, um, you know, Smoky Hollow is, uh, is a great place to consider, um, my original definition of, of live work, where you actually, you know, photographer has a studio and she works there, but she lives up top, you know, she lives right on site there, you know, those sorts of, of uses that may not necessarily be affordable, but at least we're trying to meet our arena numbers, you know? We, we have other numbers besides affordable, and I know affordable is the thing here. But, um, the other thing, just walking here to, uh, planning commission tonight, you know, I walked down Main Street, uh, Tapazon closed, which is, makes me really sad. You know, farmer's market is, uh, is looking a little sparse and, you know, what, what, what brings vibrancy to a downtown and it's people. And so as this civic center gets redeveloped, uh, I would like, I'd, I'd love the, the city to consider adding some density here. And if it's going up, if it's adding some smaller units, you know, uh, uh, professional force units that, um, you know, people live here, they walk out, they go right to the farmer's market, they're going to all these restaurants, they don't have to drive anywhere. I mean, to me, those are things that, that really stimulate a, an economy and give life to a town like El Segundo. So, uh, I'd, I'd love to see a little bit more density happening here. And, uh, that's all I got. Okay. All right. Anything else on this topic? I guess what we're supposed to do is receive and file the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan Update.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the feedback tonight, it's very helpful.
Sure, okay, good, yeah, I, I always love the conversation, it's great. Uh, we did, I, I don't know that we provided direction to staff, I mean, it's a discussion, I mean, good luck, do the right thing. That's right, right. I guess we just receive and file what we, we saw this, so do I need a motion for that? Okay, well, we consider it received and filed. Okay, moving on to, uh, item D unfinished business, is there any unfinished business that we need to talk about? All right, none. Reports, the community development director.
Well, I sort of already shared and I, I've been providing monthly updates on, on the land use settlement update that, that, so the consultant award will happen at the second meeting in February, slotted to, to happen at the second meeting in February with city, city council. And so, um, that will be the selection of the consultant team. So if you tune in, find out who, who the team is, or we're still really narrowing it down. We got a couple more weeks of, of asking some pointed questions of the consultants to choose between a couple of the firms. But, um, that, that will be a very exciting, um, process for, for the city. I'm, I'm somewhat biased because, you know, I'm planner by, by heart, um, but it is probably one of the most important investments the city can make, uh, every twenty to thirty years, uh, in its future. It drives everything from development to public safety and open space and, um, all other realms of, of, of the, the operations of the city, uh, so traffic circulation and, you know, some of those issues are close to your, to your heart. And so I, it's, it's, uh, it's going to be an exciting process for the commission to participate in as well as the community. So that, keep an eye out for that, uh, and I'll, I'll keep the commission updated as we progress through that process.
Thank you, Michael.
I, sorry, and then, um, just also to follow up, I, to, um, our city clerk wanted me to convey to the commission that there was an email that was sent to your C C B emails from the F P P C, and that is in regards to the submitted or seven hundred form. So please, please, please make sure you look for it, um, check your spam just in case, but it is important to do that, uh, and get that form seven hundred done. So whether you're, you're continuing on or, or leaving, that needs to be done. And, uh, also she wanted me to stress that the fines will be going to you as the individuals, not, not the city, so, um, it is important that you.
New city clerk, it's not messing around.
I thought you brought those to us last time. Didn't you bring them last year?
No, 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 just go online and fill it out.
This, this year, this year's, if I got a little additional context, in the past, the city clerk was allowed to facilitate the process and the city clerk used to send that email out, but now the F P P C is sending it directly to commissions boards and council members, um, as opposed to going through the city clerk. Eduardo and I luckily can still go through the city clerk, um, and the city can take our fines if we don't do it, but, uh.
So not only is she not going to do it for you, she's going to fine you if you don't.
And I, and I won't tell you what the deadline is because I want you guys to do it ASAP. Exactly, which means you found it.
It is, it is not an onerous process.
And you can do it right then and there.
And actually, the best news is once you do it, you can just duplicate it each year if, if nothing has changed, so.
And, uh, yeah, that's it. And then I will follow up with, uh, uh, Mario and Mark regarding the, um, planning commissioners' training.
Reports from commissioners, anybody?
Can I just ask how the, the vacancy process is, is going?
Technically, the application window for the seat vacated by now council member Keldorf had a twenty-one day posting period that, that closed, I think, on the twenty-first actually of this month. And so I don't know how many applications were actually received, but the next step in that process would be scheduling interviews with, with city council, um, likely during sometime in February.
Any other comments? I have a little announcement. So my wife Reba and I have decided to move to San Luis Obispo and it's actually going to happen pretty quickly. So, uh, as much as, I mean, we've lived in El Segundo for twenty-two years now, been on planning commission for, I don't know, a year or two, eight maybe. This has been just a wonderful ride, but we, uh, we'll continue to keep our house here in El Segundo, but, um, I think for that reason, I'm going to have to step down. So, um, which is a really tough time because it's going to be a heck of a year with this, but I think I'll be able to call in and heckle from, from, from afar.
We're going to adopt a no J zone.
That's not the first time I've heard that, Mike. I get that a lot, right? So it's, uh, kind of with a heavy heart that I'm, this is probably going to be my last planning commission meeting. So, um, I have really loved working with everybody here, Jasmine, Eduardo, Venus, John Pickhaver, uh, Michael, Paul, I mean, it's just been a phenomenal staff and has been, just a, a really fulfilling part of my life. So I've been so happy to serve and, uh, you've got some, so a, a great team here that's going to take over, Kevin? Uh, I called Kevin today and he goes, dude, you've, you've been chair for one, one meeting. I said, look, one and done, come on. Yeah, I mean, yeah. You gotta just kind of be done with it. So, um, yeah, so thank you to everybody and, uh, it's, it's been a great, great run. So appreciate it all.
Thank you. Chair, before we move on, I'd like to share something and then Eduardo has something, but, um, just, you know, thank you for, for your service. You know, when, um, when Brenda Newman stepped down, one of the things I shared is, you know, when you take a new job somewhere, one of the, at least when I do, one of the things that you consider is just the tenure of staff, uh, and the tenure of the commission and, and council, because when there's high turnover, it's usually a warning sign. And, and at the time, we had a really long-term, longstanding commission and in the last three years, uh, since I got here, we've lost three now.
Don't take that personally.
But really, you know, I, I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you, um, as the, as the rest of the commissioners as well. We've had a lot of really productive conversations and study sessions and seen some fun projects together and, and I've, I've enjoyed the working relationship and, uh, the brainstorming and the, the conversations regarding bike, bike lanes. And, and I am, uh, almost certain that you're not really fully going away. And I, I look forward to working with you in the, in the future and, and congratulations on the move. And, uh, we look forward to hearing about your new home.
Thank you.
And I think I'll hand it over to Eduardo as well.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo what, what Michael said. I think, you know, thank you for, for being, um, a big advocate, you know, for this community. I know you've been a big advocate for the bicycling, uh, folks out there and always have looked out for them and that's, that's a good thing, you know, uh, especially in this, this day and age. And I know that, that's, that's your passion and we appreciate that. And so, um, you know, I, I think you kind of wanted to get out of here like real quick without any kind, but as when I heard about this yesterday, I was like, nope, I got to write up a quick resolution. So you two are, uh, are, are subject to, to, to my, uh, my resolution writing. So with that said, uh, resolution of the El Segundo Community Development Department in recognition of Jay Heschler's service as planning commissioner and the city's shortest term chair. Whereas on July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, Jay Heschler made his grand appearance on the El Segundo Planning Commission, where he was thrown to the wolves when at his first meeting, the Topgolf project was considered by the planning commission.
I remember.
That was a very big endeavor, yes. So whereas over his tenure, Jay has amazingly managed to keep every strand of his hair on that dome. I had to write that with some jealousy, you know? I will admit to that. So, whereas Jay has attended, um, uh, over eighty planning commission meetings and set a record for, for tearing only two. Whereas Jay has thoughtfully, insightfully and objectively considered many insignificant projects that have come before the commission, including the Topgolf project, uh, L A Chargers Training Facility, specific plans, housing elements, et cetera. Jay has, was an advocate for the bicycle community and ensuring such, uh, amenities were included in large projects and specific plans that came before him and the commission. And whereas Jay has served on the planning commission with integrity and objectivity while being an advocate for the city, its residents and staff. So now therefore the El Segundo Community Development Department hereby fines determines and resolves as follows, Jay may leave the planning commission, but the planning commission will never leave him. Community development staff appreciates Jay's commitment to the planning commission, his service to the El Segundo community and appreciates his support for staff for over the past seven and a half years. Jay has served his time in the planning commission penitentiary, as all those have come before him have, and is hereby released to ride and pedal his bike into the sunset. Passed and approved this day of twenty, January twenty-third.
Awesome.
So congratulations, but, yes. And, and I know it's custom, custom to, to give you, um, to give the outgoing chair the gavel.
I didn't give you time.
But you didn't give us time, but I will say I did find this to give you.
Oh, nice.
So, and it can also be a stress reliever, but, uh, yes, I, I did, I did find a, a substitute for, for you, so I'll go ahead and get, we'll go ahead and give you that as well.
Thank you, Eduardo.
Thank you.
That is, that is fantastic.
Jay's record might get beaten in about a week.
Keep an eye on Kevin. Okay, uh, last reports from city attorney, Joaquin, you still there?
Uh, nothing at this time. Jay, you're going to be really missed.
Thank you, Joaquin. Really loved working with you. I don't even know where to look. Where are you? All right, and, uh, as, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.